It to the.
Good morning, everyone. This is the Knox County Commissioners, October seventh, two thousand twenty five. We have our Cleveland Browns representative here, was able to get back from London, England and find to be able to share with us today. So. Matt, if you want to share with us about the Browns and the county county litter is recycling.
Um, I'd rather talk about something that's not gonna bring us all to tears. So we're gonna get straight out of the recycling stuff. The recycling world is much happier than the. The Browns and in fact the guardian world at the moment. Um, so first thing on the agenda, um. Both of our river alleys are complete. So basically, we used to try to do all of the Koko sing and then the Knox segment of the Mohican at one time. It is since uh kind of. Shifted away from that. Um, so the main river alley, uh, the Koko sing one was on September thirteenth. And then we had folks out doing the Mohican. And then a group specifically did the Knox segment. Um, so all said and done, we had over a hundred tires from just the river cleanups.
Is that both favorites or?
Yeah, that's from both. Uh, what I call the Ryan rule number, like what maintenance goes out and does. Uh, was closer to a hundred and thirty, but thirty of those tires were from our spring cleanup. They were at our tire pickup spot. Um. I shouldn't be surprised, but like when you do the same thing every year and like things go perfectly according to plan. Honestly, no slip ups this year. Um, I had a sprained wrist at the time too. So Andrew was uh. Tagging along with me for the day, having an extra set of hands to carry supplies and pizza. It was fantastic, but. Yeah, it was Andrew was a big help that day. Um, also, like I said, maintenance department, anything I need, it's always covered. So I'm very thankful for those guys. Ryan was the jack of all trades dude, and he knows how it goes. You're either sitting in the truck doing nothing or you're very busy. Um. And he just goes wherever he's needed. So. Weather was perfect. Uh, we filled six dumpsters, the kind of fun tagline for the years. This was the cheapest river rally. This one cost me the least amount of money. Um, our friends over at Republic Services uh for both the spring cleanup and now both of these river cleanups. Has been absolutely free to the community. They they're all for the vision. So Andrew and I went out Friday, Friday last week. I was like, well, what can I do for you guys? And they're like, no, we're just glad to help. But we went out to Republic's transfer. Transfer station, I posed by dungeons. Thanks again, Republic, because you know, we're very appreciative for what they've been doing for us, but. Yeah, overall volunteer numbers probably anywhere from one to one twenty this year, so. Very standard, um. Yeah, like I said, I shouldn't be shocked, but like when everything goes according to plan, it's just fantastic. It's. I get very worked up that time of year. Last time I presented when we're all at Moro County DKMM, it's very. It's very jittery. It takes me about seven days to cool down after that, but yeah.
When are you providing to the volunteers?
Volunteers get uh, everyone gets bad, everyone gets a river cleanup T-shirt made of recycled material from Perform a Graphic Services. Um, the T-shirt sponsor this year was CES Credit Union, so having some sponsorship, um. You know, and people that kick in cash and resources, and then we have volunteer sponsors. So we had environmental help from Jel one out this year. For the second year in a row, but. Um, community partnerships are great. And then right after I was at the state recycling conference. And people from other communities like, yeah, how many people come up there? We have a lot of great people here, and it takes, as soon as I leave Knox County and I talk to other people, I realize how how good we have it here. So. Uh, as far as education goes, um, those numbers are really picking up. Like I said, I. You know, been around and done exchange before and garden clubs and stuff, but I'm having some new groups reach out. Um, so I have. Got a few speaking opportunities coming up um soon. Yesterday I met up with a local homeschool group. We had about fifteen kids. Ages two to sixteen. I, you know, you prep for that age grade, because you don't prep at all. I show up, I scope it out, and I'm gonna use a. A bigger word like biodiversity. I look at the older kids when I say litter is bad for the animals. I look at the young kids. We met up at the main pavilion. I walked him down the litter trail, um. The Randy put in and you know, it's basically like little cages put around styrofoam that was placed there and you know, it's. Since twenty eighteen, I believe. She basically get. To watch it not break down over time. So we did that. Did a little nature hike and then they played on the natural play area. It's very satisfying for me because. Back when I worked for the parks, that big log out there, I helped hollow that out by hand. So.
So which park did you talk about? You take?
Wolf Run. So if anyone's on the live stream too, um, anyone affiliated with the school more than happy to show up or your. Church group scout group, what have you have been making the rounds. Um, so it's fun getting out of the office, doing education the old fashioned way. I just got rebooked to be back at my alma mater, East Knox K three six. They can't get enough of me out here, so. I'll be back out in dog country here um at the end of the month. Um, yeah, like I said, a lot of community groups are reaching out. Um, something I'm always happy to do for people. Um, we have an upcoming city program, um. Basically Tanner and I have an agreement. The city's been really doing a great job of tire events, trash take back events. Obviously, taking trash to the transfer station is expensive. Um, so they're doing these subsidized events. And basically is like, hey, we're doing it for city residents only. If you give us X amount of dollars, we'll put it out to all county residents. Um, so I have a specific DKMM uh contamination grant fund. So it's another thing. My involvement, the county gets basically uh to participate just off the DKMM dollar, which is exciting. So I'm kicking them fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, the event is gonna be an aerial foundation park uh for anyone listening. Uh, I forget the exact hours, but Saturday, October eighteenth. It's gonna be a busy day in the community that's going on, and also the Brown Family Environmental Center Harvest Festival will be on that Saturday from twelve to four. But basically, it's, you wanna pay this much for your trash or do you wanna pay this much? So, um. Yeah, uh, we did an ag tire event, which was. Quite a while ago now, it was back in August, but that was the first time we've done that in seven years um out of the Moore County Fairgrounds. Um, Knox County residents made up for just below twenty five percent. So. Um, Knox was relatively well represented. You know how it goes is like. Moro numbers are usually the lowest because they have the smallest population. Delaware is obviously usually the highest. But they kind of were balanced out because it was hosted in Moro, but um a lot of our residents were out there for that. One of those things you can only really afford to do every seven years is. Uh, we have a private contractor there that has machines that take all the ag tires because they're very heavy. It's not like unloading residential tires, um. But that one really well. Um, the compost facility. All said and done, it's almost leaf season, which is. A hectic time of year. Things are actually doing all right up there. Green Machine is doing a good job. Justin keeps in contact well. He reached out to myself and then so I reached out to Jason and then Todd. Basically, we had one of those moon craters forming because when you have materials sitting for a long time, it rains, sinks. And then the materials ground up. Sometimes you have stuff, but Green Machine does a good job. They didn't even contact me. At first, they just immediately blocked it off with cones, which was nice. And then they got with um Jason, Todd and I, and we talked about the best way. So we got it filled in out there.
Phil and I drove by there. Was it last week? It looked pretty good, actually.
You gotta take what you can get, you know, it's like for as much as it gets used, which like I said, being a free service is. That's the other thing. When I go to these state things and I tell people are. I call it the yard waste facility because compost means a lot to a lot of different people, but. When they're like, oh, it's free for residents and the business is under a certain level, but. You know, all said and done, um, I think Green Machine being really active out there has made a big difference. Um. It's that Justin's got my cell phone number. If he's out there lately, he's got a question, he'll shoot me a text, but.
Yeah, they they had most of the. Tree branches and all that all ground up, big pile of bulk out there, so.
Yeah, we're getting caught up. Um, when we. At the debacle this spring with changing contractors, we were. Little bit of a panic, you know, you never know what you're dealing with and you know, one day it's great and the next day it's terrible. So.
So there's a, there's a a rumor out there that, and maybe you can clear this up.
Yeah.
All those mounds of mulch, mountains of mulch.
Yeah.
What's the difference between that and what you're buying at Lowe's in a bag to put over your landscaping?
Yeah, so. Two major differences, um. What the the mulch we have out there, the ground up material. It's fantastic. I recommend it more for people in the country. If anyone has property. And you're like, I wanna mulch the trail from the barn to the woods. Think about how much you would spend on the bagged, treated, dyed mulch. So this stuff is not dyed. It's uh from untreated wood, so it's uh it's more natural, if you will. Uh, it's free. People are doing us a favor when they come up and pick it up because when you have a bunch of material coming in, you need a bunch coming out. Uh, so the main difference is it's free, it's untreated material. Like I said, if you're landscaping for your little house here in town, you want a certain color, you know, getting the bag mulch is probably the way to go.
Is there a different kind of vegetation that grows out of this versus the bag mulch? Like mushrooms and?
We have. It's like the community broom. What is in out there is what the community gives us, so. Whenever you're getting from the bag store, it's probably like a composite mulch mix of this, that and the other. We have like, it's like those community soups the hippies made, you know, it's whatever they show up with is what you get, so. Yes, it's we're kind of at the. Discretion of what is. Donated, dropped off, but.
Do we have the capability of uh having it not so fine? It to be like branches where you could uh scoop it up and actually have it be a tread and mits?
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, I mean, Green Machine is the one doing the grinding, so basically anything we would ask for, they would do. Obviously, the. The finer the ground, the more it's gonna cost, um, because it's more work to do, but you know, if we reached out to Justin and said, hey, we want. Some of the ground fine and then some of it a little rougher. Plus, a lot of people too, they go out there and they get the stuff shot ground up. You know, we have some local firewood moguls that I'm sure are out there quite a bit. Um, somebody left some cedar out there the other day that somebody called me, can I, can I just have this? And we have it, it's their game, so.
Part of the reason why I'm asking, when we were up at Frantique Town at the uh. They um, they're going to need um material for the paths out there. And when I'm looking at the vaults, it's really fine that we have that there right now.
Yeah.
And I think for a path, we may not want stuff that fine, but we would like to help them out in that process.
Um, I mean, if we ever wanna change. Any of the operations out there, you know, it's Justin's great being in contact with, so. And usually when he asks for something, I basically just go straight to Jason and say, hey, are we good to pay for this? Um. But yeah, I'm kind of the. I can go out there here and there to check on it, but I'm just, I'm merely the messenger middleman of chaos out there, so. Yeah, really, anytime we would wanna change how much we're grinding. How small it needs to be ground, um. Yeah, I mean, Justin's got the material for it, so. Um, the city composting initiative, so I met with uh the folks over at Community Roots and Mayor Starr, so the city is going to be paying. A private contractor, he is deeply moved by our compost pickup program. So basically, we are doing some stuff that. A little ahead of the curve, you know, we were inspired by a program in Bexley. This program is a very small pilot pla- program, um, I did a write along for it, but community members on the west end, um. Councilman Rockman does it, Chef Knob from Hat Big Bistro does it. Um, they basically have a compost bucket, gets picked up by city engineer Quentin Platt every Saturday morning. And goes out there, so. There are some people in the community that have curbside trash, compost and recycling, which is very cutting edge for a small. Rural community, you know, we're very excited to roll something like this out. You know the drill, you roll a program for. Five people, ten people, twenty people, you get the statistics and then you ask the big companies for money. Hey, we do this for X amount of people. Costs this much. If we want to do it for fifty people or a hundred people, here's how much we're asking for. Um, so Mayor Starr is hiring a contractor. He's gonna film us a little video about it. Um, he is also going to have us filming at the Pumpkin Smash because we'd like to do more with Community Roots. Um, obviously, they are. Allowed to compost X amount through EPA stuff, and we don't take food stuff at the compost facility. Um, so working with Community Roots is our way of kind of providing an option for a different style of compost. The city is always like, hey, when are we gonna start taking food grade composting out at the compost facility? And I'm like. Oh, what's do you wanna kick in for that? Do you wanna help us work with the EPA? Um. I'm. Very optimistic that maybe we could do something, probably not. Our our facility out of there is already kind of full, win yard waste, but. If we could acquire more land at some point in the next decade or so, and maybe do something like Price Farm Farms Organics in Delaware, very cool process, but. You know, we are, it's one of our more cutting edge programs that. Some of our other neighboring communities are probably pretty far from, so we're really excited to roll stuff like that out. Uh, the Pumpkin Smash, we are running it back on November fifteenth. Uh, we have two food trucks signed up to come this year. I told Community Roots, if young people in Knox County need to show up, you gotta have a food truck. They're friends at Grindhouse Barbecue and provide, Community Roots gives them produce for their food truck, so Grindhouse and then What the Fizz. And artisanal soda. It's like a company that finds a way to put more sugar into soda, um, but I've heard it tastes great, so.
So where is the Pumpkin Smash?
It is going to be out at Community Roots, out on the end of Gambier Street, out where Glass Garden Greenhouse used to be. It's gonna be a Saturday afternoon. Um, we're gonna have. Show up with a pumpkin, join a raffle. We had Fat Dog Vinyl, Old Mr. Baileywicks, Almost Famous. We got a bunch of local sponsors, Happy Bean. Uh, donating gift baskets, gift cards, all sorts like that, so. You know, it's funny, is I get out there last year and there's a pumpkin with an autograph of Mr. Jason. He he he. Uh, got a rare autograph from the neighbor boy and was like, hey. I was like, don't hire me, but um, we will be smashing a pumpkin with your name. I promise it's not some.
So do you get a lot of volunteer uh pumpkins that grow there after you do this? You know what I mean?
Um, it usually breaks down pretty quickly. Obviously, people know if you toss it and field you will have pumpkins. Yes, here when I was living on uh main campus in Columbus, we let our pumpkins rot away in the first, and the next year we. Had all these pumpkin vines everywhere.
Yeah.
When I went back a few later, uh, years later, the landlord ripped out our pumpkins, so I was bummed, but no, since it's um. Rotated and basically made to where we can get um a compost for people to pick up. No, you're not gonna get sprouts in it. And then last but not least, um, I know I mentioned this when I saw y'all for the DKMM meeting, but. This program got going in Delaware. We are gonna do the string light recycling this year and electronics recycling has gone, has been going really well. I took out that ad on electronics recycling in the town money saver. And that has been pretty hot. That's been blowing up my phone. So people are recycling TVs. Styrofoam, um. All sorts of things here, so. Now, it's kind of a good news time of year. It's nice when the river alley ends and it's like. Things cool off a little bit because September and then obviously April for the spring cleanup are kind of everything spikes, so. Yeah, I mean, just school programs and stuff this time of year.
So when the Pumpkin Smash, did we have uh one of those machines that launches it? Or would how?
We are in the process of acquiring an old tributary, um. We had all sorts of weapons out there last year, um. I ru- I went to my parents the night before and my dad was quite a. A a local legend at the slow pitch softball community. I was like, hey, you got any old bats, so. We did bats. Like I said, we went out there and filmed last year too. We had a nice practice take, so. When we film our promo video this year, a lot of the homeschool kids that I met with. They don't do stuff on Saturdays, so they won't be there. So it sounds like the plan is to bring the homeschool kids out during the week. And smash some pumpkins with those kids, um. But.
They take out some aggression.
You get the pumpkins from just residents or?
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing. So you get your stuff. They are nice decor in September and October. Uh, after they sit on your porch, Lord knows you're not making a soup out of them. And then we did it a week earlier last year, but like I said, the pumpkins aren't fully breaking down. Um, until about mid-November, so that's why we changed the date, but you bring your gross pumpkins out. The ones I picked up from Fat Dog Vinyl. Um, Phil loaded them up for me in a bag and the bag leaked in my personal vehicle last year. So I traded one of my guitar students that does car detailing. I was like, get this pumpkin nonsense out of my car and I'll give you free lessons for a month, so. Yeah, we're looking forward to it and. Very, very thankful for this guy over here, Andrew, our promotion extraordinaire. That's the other thing, people in other communities like, wait, you just have a guy that films and edits videos, so.
He works just for you, right?
That's what you're telling everybody. Yeah, a little bit because like, like, wait, you have somebody in IT that comes out and. Yeah, I don't know what I do.
No, this is new to me.
Honest to God, he was my personal assistant at the river cleanup this year and. He might be on a retainer for that in future years. That's pretty nice. Yeah, um. So like I said, couldn't do it without Andrew. We get a lot of, we get a lot of social media buzz because everybody else is using. AI-generated flyers that look terrible, and I have human edited pieces of cinematography cells. Um, the stocks on AI are going down. The stocks on Andrew Champ and I just threw that. Yeah, that's all I got today, guys.
Recycling's already fun. I just uh. I just gotta spice it up a little bit.
We have approved the establishment of the chargeback amounts, and this is the annual, I think JT was in on his EMA, they talking about. The, what we call Knox alerts, but it's the wins. Um, mass notification, countywide mass notification system. So the cost of that is fifteen thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars a year. And then we build back the villages in the city, uh. In Hospital Apple Valley Property Association. So the total bill back is fifty-seven fifty. That'll offset some of that cost.
Those who pay for CI.
There's nothing needed. Then we have utility permit for Lick and Row Electric on Saps Run Road in this in Brown Township.
Those favors say I.
Then we utility permit for Spectrum on uh for Utica Road in Morden Township. Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favors say I.
And then we have another one for Spectrum on Majors Road in Howard Township.
Motion to approve.
Those who pay for CI.
Then we have a uh. Services support license agreement with software solutions. And this is for the county water wastewater utility building billing program. Software solutions is the county financial system. This is just a separate agreement he has that interacts with his billing software.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Those who pay for CI.
Of course, one signature. And then we have one addition, commissioners just came in a little late, apologize, but we we did get ratification of the. Ask me contract with the Knox County Water Wastewater Contract. They did ratify that contract. Chip has reviewed this. It's ready for you to sign. Really, there's other than wages, it was adding an on-fall provision and then lining up the county uh vacation policy. That we use for the county and getting it in this contract so they match. Other than that, it was a pretty quick negotiation, so it's ready to be the approval sign.
Use that motion.
Yes.
Those who favor say I.
Then we've got a couple sets of bills and some or a couple sets of minutes. We have one transfer, it's like, yeah, one transfers. And we did enter, we did get a resolution from, a formal resolution from the fair board. I'm gonna have Penny put this in the minutes. Just says that they are asking us to. Tear down the, that house, the blue house, as we call it, the fairgrounds that's in deplorable shape. Uh, we are getting some, working, we're getting some grant funding to take that building down for them, but this is their formal request of that. Um, I think we asked them to do that only because the commissioners own the buildings on the fairgrounds, but we kind of, they leased the fairgrounds, so. We wanted to make sure they were definitively asking us.
We're still waiting on their family.
Yeah, it was gonna be in October, so. Um, we've already got a quote from Jeff Wermute to take it down. Uh, Sam's working on the green, so I think we're good to go. Nice one, enter that, that's, yes. The rest of those are ready for you to sign. Penny, if that's union contract, if you'll just scan me a copy, I guess I need to sign that. And then if you'll scan me that, I'll get that to the union to get their signatures on it. Thank you.
Then on, I mean, on the uh, the bill list, I need a copy of that. That after we do this, I need to take that to a meeting with me. You know, they show some people some of the bills that are there.
Do you want both?
Yes, please.
We should have that young man introducing himself.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jack Calaminda, I'm the reporter with Knox Pages. I'm visiting today for Cheryl. Um, she, I think, mentioned to me a couple of years that I was coming by. Really happy to be here, happy to sit in, uh, observe everything, so.
The uniformer, we weren't mean to you.
Yes, I will.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And and then uh we have guests here with us. If you have anything you'd like to say. Yes, and and you know, say your name and and where you live.
My name is Mercy Haley. I live in Silver. Um, I don't have anything planned out to say because quite frankly, I'm getting really tired of coming here. Um, I wanted to tell us how honestly sad and disappointed I am. We just had this guy sit here, said all these great things that's happening in Knox County. And all the traction that they're trying to make on social media and all of the work that Andrew's putting in, yet. One of the other county commissioners here has her own social media president, presence. It's. Everybody knows about Brenda and her lawsuit that's coming against her, but we don't know about the pumpkin smash that's about to happen. That's very disappointing. Um, this whole entire time, Dylan Berry, you have said that there has been nothing. No proof, no nothing that you have to speak on for her and her personal life issues. It is now being alleged that she has known about this abuse for twenty-five years. This is more now than just not. I'm looking for you guys. We all voted you guys in. Speak up for the county. It's not whether it is trying to save your one whole career or whatever, like right or wrong. You guys can take your stance for right and wrong. You can't force her to do anything you can't reason with crazy. Totally get that. But you two are setting your inactions and your in vocalness is sending a message to everybody in Knox County. You guys are sitting here laughing at a table. With somebody that allegedly knew for twenty-five years that children. Five years in order were getting abused. And you just sit here and be quiet? You just listened and laughed while this guy spoke of all the hard work he's putting in to make Knox County amazing. And then you have Brenda. Sitting right here, derailing all of that. Nobody's gonna know or remember a pumpkin smash. But they know and remember that this evil woman. Has so much power and say in Knox County and everybody else at this table. I don't care if you have a title or not. I don't have a title. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I'm a wife. I am here using my voice and speaking up for what is right because I belong in Knox County. I am pro-family, pro-children, pro-right. And I hope and pray that some point in time you guys stop ha- having your tails between your legs and speak up. You are gonna get what is coming to you now. The courts are gonna handle it. And we are all gonna watch it play out. You can drag your feet all you want. The end is near. What side of right are the rest of you gonna be on? Is what I would like to know.
Four seconds. Thank you, Tori.
And I don't have anything else for you today, commissioners.
Yeah. Didn't you have anything? Barry, you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't.
Aren't you gonna go for a ride today?
I am. I'm gonna be riding the uh Knox County Transit. Uh, so. I'll let you know how my ride was after I.
Is it so free?
Yeah, well, it. Oddly enough, I tried to get a bargain last week, cause it's a dollar, but if you're a veteran, it's half price, so. I can have them pick me up and bring me to work for fifty cents.
But the rock you're going on.
Yeah, I'm going on one of the flat trails.
Which is free, right?
Free, yeah.
Oh, one more thing. Check out the park in Centover.
The toy here, the player.
Yes, the playground.
Yes, you have a lot of good stuff going on.
Centerburg is on the move.
Yes, it's been a long couple weeks.
So if there's no other thing, I'll take motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Re-sign the chair.